We'd like to begin our meeting this evening, but before we have our pledge, when we stand up, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the Harrod County 13-year veteran fireman that was killed this morning in a fire in Harrod County. They had a huge mansion that caught on fire and one of the firemen lost his life in that. So we'll have a moment of silence and then we'll go in with the pledge. Amen. And this evening, we'll have the pledge to your flag will be led by Chloe Whitser.
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 Whitser, okay? And if you want to come up to one of those microphones and you can leave us in there.
I pledge allegiance to the United of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, in the wasteful with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll begin our meeting this evening with approval of the minutes and operating statements from our meetings from January, or from July, and this meeting is opening our meeting for July the 23rd, 2018.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the operating statements, June 25th, 2018 council meeting minutes, July 9th, 2018 work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for June 2018.
I'll second it.
Motion for, motion and a second, or any questions? Hearing non-autos in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, motions carried. Okay, at this time, we will, I will have Laura introduce our guest of honor this evening.
Okay, so tonight, we are honoring Chloe Whitser, did I say it right, Whitser? As the town of Union Bridge If I Were Mayor essay contest writer. I went to speak with all the 4th graders in, I think it was February, I think it was Valentine's Day, and invited all 4th graders at Ullmer Wolf to submit an essay for the If I Were Mayor essay contest, and we selected as a council and mayor Chloe's essay as the town of Union Bridge winner. I will read what the theme was, and then we're going to ask Chloe if she would like to read her essay. So the theme for this year was, "Has something ever mattered so much to you that you had to do something about it? Look around your city, town, community, it's probably a great place to live, but can always be better. What issue or cause matters enough to make you do something about it?" So Chloe, if you want to come up to the microphone, you can read your essay for us.
If I were mayor, I would start a community garden. I would start a community garden because there are non-healthy foods for school lunches. Also, some people don't have fresh, have any fresh food. I would provide fresh food for people to have. Another example is that we don't have fresh lunches at school, and Community Garden would give fresh food to people and schools in Union Bridge. How I would start a community garden is by creating posters, flyers, also I would start an online database, so if people went online, they could see that I was starting a community garden, and they, that they could start helping me start the community garden. I would start a community garden to give fresh foods to people who need it, and I would also give schools in Union Bridge fresh food. To involve the community, I would, I would want to see permission from the Union Bridge Town Council to install a community garden from the Union Bridge Town Council to install a community garden in the town. The Town Council will also be provided to support and potentially promote my idea. If they agree, it is a needed feature for our town. Union Bridge is making positive changes by adding the community garden in that town for people to have fresh and healthy food. I will let others know that they can help the television meetings.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Perry, Perry?
At this time, we have a certificate, two certificates of recognition for you for outstanding work that you did with our mayor contest. And I have this for you, and also have a gift certificate for you to go to original pizza and whatever you pick one there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going down through the business of our meeting here this evening, under the mayor's report, very little to report this month, just everyone to keep Henry Hahn from Tonty Town, he used to be mayor over at one time, now he's their town manager, is going, undergoing some surgery right now and some treatments in Baltimore, and Pat Rockenberg, which is the mayor of Mount Airy, he has also been in and out of the hospital, and will be going through some treatments for the next several months, so we'll keep those gentlemen in our prayers. We need approval of the Shriner Court FY 1819 budget, and let's see, I think everyone has a copy of the budget or had a chance to look over it. Need a motion to approve Shriner Court operation budget in the amount of $139,687 and its revenue and expenses. If everybody's had a chance to look over that, we'll need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2018, 2019 Shriner Court draft budget.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, or any questions to that? Hearing non-autos in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, motions carried. And they are also wanting authorization to do some work up there, capital needs assessment, accessibility assessment for up at Shriner Court, and it's in the amount of $3,950 to do this assessment, and it's all outlined the scope of work they want to do. They haven't had it done for a couple of years, and they want to do this onsite assessment. And we also need a motion to accept that.
Is that included in their budget that they gave to us?
She said she does have the money in her, like, forehead, but she wants the contract approved.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to be, for the assessment of $3,950.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any questions? Hearing non-autos in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, motions carried, okay. Okay, let's get down through that part. Okay, we're going to get to the attorney's report right now.
Okay, well, I have an update on the solar generating facility review, and the quick overall status right now is that the planning commission has made a recommendation with conditions, and we thought it would be a good idea to sort of frame what the council needs to do, and then to talk a little bit about that recommendation, and then to have the mayor and council decide when you would want to spend a little more time to sort of roll up your sleeves and dig into that, which would probably be either at the next work session or the next council meeting. So the purpose of tonight is to sort of bring you to date on what we, what we have and what the planning commission has to say. If you would look at the flow chart that we sent, because what you do in some ways is similar to what the planning commission did in reaching its recommendation. And just to walk you through the chart from left to right, the first, do you have it?
Yeah, I had it, I'm just trying to, I had it, I'm just.
It's right there.
The first question for the, for the planning commission and for you as the council, is whether the proposal needs to be put through all the normal processes, which would be a board of zoning appeals proceeding with public hearing, a planning commission proceeding with public hearing, and then a rezoning, which ultimately would come to council for public hearing. So a pretty, because the project lies in two different zoning categories, the industrial and the R6,000, and because the R6,000 does not allow, as part of the master plan, this type of facility, it's, would be fairly complicated to go through those processes. The planning commission felt that the applicant had given sufficient information, and I think that you all have pretty much the background information from your participation in their open house and the public hearing, and some of the reports that we've given, some of the interim reports that we've given. They felt that there was enough information to bypass the formal processes, but to, but to get to the, basically the merits of what the town's position is. So they moved on and listened and evaluated what the applicant had to say, and there was some sentiment initially to oppose any of the solar panels in the R6,000 district. And so there was discussion about that, and I believe I reported to you last month that they had deferred their further deliberations because the developer at the prior planning commission meeting suggested that he might be able to scale back the number of panels in the R6,000 district to address some of the current concerns. They had already agreed to scale back five acres to dedicate that land for the town's wastewater, future wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Cuman's staff report to the, to the planning commission had suggested that another two acres should be scaled back to sort of tighten up the area where the panels would exist, and that's what we were waiting on last time I reported to you. So you all deferred any further discussion last month at the, at your regular meeting. The, as I believe you know, because you got copies of the letter that the applicant sent, the applicant studied that and came back and reported to the planning commission that they were not able to scale back that much, that the project becomes economically not feasible at some point, and so they presented that back to the planning commission. The planning commission sort of debated that a little bit and decided that if the conditions were right, that the town could support the project, even though the town would only get five acres from the R6,000, meaning the other five acres would be in panels. And that's the way it was, has been proposed since they released the drawings that you all have seen, so the open house and the, and the public hearing that was held, that's what they continue to offer. The planning commission then moved forward to deliberate on what conditions would be necessary to give a letter of support. And I will, just to take a step back, the project has been presented to the Public Service Commission, the application has been filed, there's a public hearing that will, the first public hearing that will be held here in town, I don't know that that's been set up yet, but that will be, I want to say October 11th, but it's mid-October, we can, we can confirm that date, there is an order from the Public Service Commission with that date. So you have a little bit more time than we initially thought, but we certainly ought to be working towards having the position of the town determined, you know, through your decision, well in advance of that October hearing. Otherwise, we would be preparing sort of in a different direction to present evidence to the contrary. So although there's no urgency to decide this necessarily tonight or at the workshop, I think that the idea is to move towards an answer within a month or so. So that's where we are on the, on the processing with the Public Service Commission. Again, the reason that's important is because the town zoning laws and planning laws are preempted by the state law that's being applied by the Public Service Commission, but one of the criteria that the Public Service Commission must consider is the town's wishes on, as far as the support or opposition to the project, and how the project fits in with the town's master plan and zoning. So we will be commenting on that at some point. The, we kind of hurried and give credit to Dawn, put, to put together the minutes from the planning commission meeting, this was only a late Thursday evening, but we thought it would be useful to get those. They're unapproved, but I think they're pretty reliable, we put a lot of work into looking at that, and they give you sort of a summary of the proceedings before the planning commission, and specifically what these recommended conditions would be. And I'll also mention that I talked to the mayor this morning about procedurally how this would be handled, and because we are not deliberating tonight, I did advise the applicant's attorneys that they wouldn't necessarily have to be here tonight, and I think what we're doing tonight is very similar to what the planning commission was doing, so we're more or less bringing you up to speed. The first condition was that the portion of the property that's in the unincorporated part of the county would be annexed into the town, and that, at a time yet to be determined. And there are a few details here that once the council decides, you know, what direction to give to me, that I'm going to have to go back and sort of figure out the details of that, but I'm, so the timing on that at this point is not clear, but we would certainly want it to be something that would be irreversible. So if they get their approval, they would be annexing that portion of the property into town. The five acres of the land for the wastewater treatment plant would be dedicated unconditionally to the town. Again, the timing needs to be nailed down on that, but that would be a condition that the planning commission feels strongly about, and they also made the point that there's about an acre or so that would be needed for the county stormwater management project that's underway, and that the five acres would be in addition to the acre or so that would go for the, the stormwater management project, so roughly closer to six acres is what we're thinking. But there was a lot of discussion about being sure that the five acres was in a configuration that would accommodate the plant, the operation of the plant, the construction of the plant, and that's something that, that we're just not going to know now because that plant's so far off from being designed. So we're, the instruction was to try to build in a type of intent so that if some of the panels needed to be moved, when that date came, that there would be some expression in the agreement now, that within reason, that they could be moved or eliminated or temporarily moved in order to, to construct the plant, basically because we're not going to know exactly what the plant design is yet. And then discussion that if the town is willing to grant the letter of support, that there should be a strong tax benefit to the town, and the annexation gets us part of the way. The recommendation from Mr. Cuman is for the town to apply a similar rate on the panels that the county applies, which is about three times the, the tax rate the town applies to personal property, and that needs to be looked into, because I, I think there are some questions as to how that's going to work, and the applicant thinks, and they may be right, that the, they would have to pay the county the personal property tax anyway, like you do on, on the real property tax, so they would be paying basically double. So, but, and again, the planning commission recognized that's sort of a fiscal tax matter for the council anyway, that's not really a planning commission matter, but they felt that that was one of the conditions that needed to be ironed out clearly, and of course, you all know that the applicant has asked for a payment in lieu of taxes schedule, what they refer to as a pilot, and there's a lot of hesitation about that, but I think in the end, what the planning commission is warning is that if that can be done in a way that treats the town equal to what it would have gotten, then maybe that can be considered, but if it's, it was going to result in a tax break, then that's not something that they would have been interested in. So there's some work to be done on that, and I know Mr. Cuman is also spending some time, we're, we're trying to get, we have some figures provided by the applicant, and we're trying to get some figures on existing project so we can kind of compare it and see that the assessments that they're using in their model are, are, you know, within reasonable margin of error from what we might see here in Union Bridge. And we're not getting much help from the Carroll County Assessment Office because they just don't have any comparables, and we know they have comparables in Frederick County, so that might be a place to look. We also learned in some of our discussions with the developer that they have, and they had since before they came to the town, an agreement to sell a certain quantity of electricity through a cooperative that controls that, and one of the reasons that it becomes difficult for them to, to reduce the size of the project, of course, this is, we're taking them at their word on this, is that that's a difficult allocation to get, and if you change your request, you go to the back of the line, in their words. So they could lose, you know, their, their place, and if they go from a certain, you know, kilowatt capacity to something less, which is what the planning commission was asking, it has other ramifications. It would also require them to, I guess, reapply to the Public Service Commission and change their application there, which they, again, taking them at their word, said that they don't think the Public Service Commission would even reprocess them until they got this PJM contract, which is the capacity contract renegotiated. So those are other complications that we wouldn't have necessarily known about, but I think the planning commission took that into consideration as well. So, you know, in framing what needs to be done is, I guess, number one, is council going to be comfortable with sort of skipping through the, the formal processes, which I, which I, we've, we've talked about that to some degree, I think you all are going to be comfortable with that. And then if there's going to be a letter of support, I think the letter itself is a fairly simple document, but getting the conditions in place is where you will need to, to give guidance on that. And if, if, if you cannot reach that, then I guess the answer is a letter in opposition would be the, the alternative. And then the, I guess the other thing to point out is that this is not necessarily an exhaustive list of what you might want or demand, but this is what the planning commission determined in light of everything they had heard and what they knew, this is what they're recommending, but if there's something more that we need to talk about, then I would say we want to get that on the table fairly quickly as well.
Yeah, I think our next work session would be a time for us to work through those, are you going to be here that, for that, Dawn, or are you going to still be on vacation? I know you're going August.
13th.
We'll let you check that, check your dates, we can do it at our work session, give everybody a time to look over them, then we can.
And I'm thinking you would want to invite the applicant here for that, because there will be questions that I certainly can't answer, that you'll want to hear.
Okay, is there a next work session?
Yes.
I'll be back.
Okay.
Okay.
You available that night, John?
I'll make myself available for that.
Okay, we'll do that.
So, and I'll, I'll pass that along to the applicant, and I did tell them that I would send them a copy of the minutes once they were publicly, you know, available to the public, so.
Okay.
Now, these are draft minutes, but again, I think they're pretty accurate.
Okay.
And that is, oh, I, I will mention, just to help hopefully to simplify a little bit if we can, we have two items at the bottom of the chart, site plan minimums and decommissioning bond. I think the feeling was the decommissioning bond is going to be required anyway, that's a, that's a, so we don't really need to focus on that as an issue and as a condition, and the site plan is also going to be required. So the landscaping and the layout and the birmingham, that's going to come at a different stage, so at this point, if we want to say something about that, something that specifically we want to include in the site plan now, I don't see why we can't say it, but just generically, the site plan is going to be required anyway, so we don't need to require that, that's just part of the process.
Okay.
I think that's it, unless you have any questions.
Okay, all right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, look, Chloe, at this time, we're going to bring you up, and we're going to let you sit here in this big chair.
Oh, my goodness.
You can, right into your microphone, it's going to be pretty simple, and we'll let you start here with what this says right here, and that's for the public.
Public, public comments and concerns?
Yes. Are there, are there any public comment and concerns this evening? Yes, our deputy will give us his report, okay?
Okay.
She's so cute.
Good evening, mayor and council. Between the dates of June 25th, 2018 until July 23rd, 2018, Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to 43 calls for service within the town of Union Bridge. Out of those calls for service, only six required to report, which were the following. On July 2nd, 2018, at approximately 10:46 a.m., deputies responded to the unit block of South Main Street in reference to a domestic dispute. Investigation revealed that known subjects got into a physical altercation. Deputies were unable to observe marks or injuries to either party, and both parties were referred to the District Court Commissioner's Office to file paperwork. Upon following up with the victim, it was learned that the, that they failed to file charges, however obtained a protective order. Case was closed by lack of prosecution. On July 2nd, 2018, at approximately 8:36 p.m., deputies responded to the unit block of South Main Street in reference to a violation of a protective order. Investigation revealed that the respondent arrived at the residence after being served with a protective order. Due to the violation of the court order, respondent was arrested, case was closed by arrest. On July 4th, 2018, at approximately 3 p.m., deputies responded to the unit block of North Main Street in reference to a destruction of property. Investigation revealed that unknown suspects attempted to gain entry into a coin changing machine, causing damage to the scene. It was learned that the crime occurred on July 2nd, 2018, at approximately 12:20 a.m. Investigation continues on that. On July 6th, 2018, at approximately 12:46 a.m., deputies responded to the unit block of South Main Street in reference to a disorderly subject. Investigation revealed that known parties assaulted each other. Subjects referred to the District Court Commissioner to file for charges and slash peace orders. Case remains open pending further investigation. On July 20, correction, July 13th, 2018, at approximately 7:13 p.m., in the area of North Main Street in Maryland 75, a traffic stop was completed for a traffic violation. Investigation revealed driver was currently driving on a suspended license, driver was released on citations, into a valid Uber driver. On July 17th, 2018, at approximately 9:23 a.m., deputies responded to the unit block of South Main Street in reference to a found property. The investigation revealed that a loaded handgun was found laying in the shrubbery on the property. Gun receives this property, and investigation continues on that. On other notice, last week, from July 16th through July 20th, I was able to participate in the annual Camp Cops program held at the Farm Museum in Westminster, which somebody else was at Camp Cops as well. Camp Cops stands for Courage to Be Outstanding with Pride and Self-Confidence. Multiple law enforcement agencies were involved from across the county, to include the State's Attorney's Office, Mount Airy Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, Maryland State Police, Tonty Town Police Department, and Westminster City Police Department. The camp is designed to bring a better understanding of law enforcement to the youth of Carroll County while working in an atmosphere of a police academy. Emphasis was placed on self-discipline and teamwork by participating in fun, challenging activities. The camp included- The camp included physical and mental activities such as an obstacle course, close order drills, martial arts, first aid, gun safety, team building, crime scene investigations, and several other law enforcement activities. During the 40-hour week with the campers, I had the pleasure to instruct the yellow team with Corporal Holland of the Sheriff's Office. Our team of 20 was made up of several juveniles between the ages of 10 to 15 years old. Campers were from all parts of the county, with one of our members residing in Harry Green in Bridge. Over the week, our team worked hard through several obstacles where PT, discipline, or in other words, physical activities such as push-ups, running, flutter kicks, mountain climbers, et cetera, sound trip is the outcome. Over the course of the week, as some of the team members would state, we were the best at PT, which resulted in more PT. Over the week, I am proud to state that out of the four teams and approximately 80 other campers, yellow team placed first. Overall, it was a fun week, and each and every camper team should be proud of their accomplishments. With that, we will be holding this trophy for six months. And then it will go to Corporal Holland, where it will be in his office for the other six months. In upcoming events over the past couple of months, as you know, I'm in New Windsor as well. I've been assisting in planning the New Windsor National Night Out. That is scheduled for August 7 from 6:30 to 8:30 at the New Windsor Carnival Grounds. This year's event will host approximately 30-plus vendors, demonstrations, live entertainment, raffles, food, medication, take-back, and much, much more. So please come out and show your support. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other public comments or concerns?
Is there any more public comments or concerns?
What I would like you to do is introduce yourself and tell us about your school, what grade you're in, and then also introduce your family and who you have here with you today.
I'm Chloe Isabel. Like I said, I go to Elmore Elementary School. I'm going into fifth grade. I was in fourth grade. My mom, her name is Kelly, and that's my dad, his name is Robert, and that's my oldest brother Ryland, and that's my youngest brother Graham.
And, Lois, you have anyone else here with you?
My grandmom and my grandpa.
Well, thank you. Now, we'll go down to this next one, committee reports.
Okay. Any committee reports?
You started your right -- from your right to your left.
From your right.
You start with me?
Okay.
Okay. We had our EAC meeting two weeks ago, no, last week, I think it was. Anyway, we're working on a couple of different things that the county commissioners have tasked us to do. We're almost done, our recommendation and research into a ban on expanded polystyrene, which is not styrofoam, but everybody calls it styrofoam. And we've done some research and are most ready to give them the paper on so -- community solar gardens, I think they're calling it, where instead of a solar plant like we're talking about here, where a company's coming in to do it, it's like a bunch of residents who live near each other, have a, you know, community plot of land that they want to put solar panels on, how we would go about doing, how they'd go about doing that, and if the county is going to allow them to do that. So that's more of a research paper. And they should be given to the county commissioners. I believe our deadline is September. We also started on two new -- started our work plans for two other ones. One is gray water, which is the water out of your sink and your dishwasher and your washing machine. Does not include the water out of your bathtubs and your toilets. And I just forgot what the other one was. It's just starting, so I'll talk more about it next month. Other than that, don't think I have anything else this time.
Perry asked me to order 12 more brackets for the veteran flags, and so I ordered them. They're in, and I will pick them up this week. I reported a light to Potomac Edison that was out. On July 12, I attended the CCRC meeting, and they were talking about the Carroll Broadband Grant, which is available to businesses and municipalities. And one of the qualifications is has unmet broadband needs in an underserved or unserved area of the county and/or requires internet service redundancy for business continuity purposes. And they will be matching up to 50% of reimbursement to towns or businesses up to $25,000. So I will leave this here. Some towns were saying they're going to try to get Wi-Fi on Main Street. So, but again, you have to have money to get the money. So the information is here. That's all I have.
Okay. We're still waiting, trying to get a contractor to do the renovation on the center. So I'm still working on that, so.
Okay, we've had a pretty severe flood here Saturday night, and I don't know how much damage is done to our park. Kenny, have you gone down and looked at it?
Yeah.
Thank goodness we got our branches and our picnic tables chained down. They've been floating away, so I'm sure there's some debris to be cleaned up. We're putting some streets together. White Pond has got the contract, so it's just a matter of time to present it to them, and we'll try to correct some of our streets.
I've received two water calls since our last meeting. One was a water bill call, which I forwarded to Town Hall, and one was a call that was fixed prior to him getting to me, just wanted to let me know that they had fixed the problem within their home. I personally would like to thank Dream Big. I know you guys all attended the block party prior to this meeting. It was a lot of fun. There was a lot of food. It was just a good time, and it was a good turnout. On the Save Our Streets event, awareness event, it is Thursday, October 4th, the first Thursday in October from 4 to 8. The committee has been active and busy attaining vendors and speakers and helpful resources. We will meet with schools to set up times for the students to come. If that is a possibility this year, we are very hopeful. We are also seeking to become a nonprofit. Our mission statement is tentative. Save Our Streets is a nonprofit designed to educate and provide resources to at-risk individuals living within the community in order to stop drug abuse and other violence before it happens. So that will become our next step. That's it?
Right.
Okay, you've done a very fine job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go back down to your mom's there.
Good job.
Mayor, I can add, I pulled out the Public Service Commission order. The hearing in Union Bridge will be on October 18. The time and location to be determined. So I guess we'll hear more about that as the time gets closer. And that is, the schedule is in the administrative law judge's order that I think you all have. It's kind of buried at the end of the order.
Okay. I just had to break down, just so that everybody knows the order of things that happen up here. Every council person has a different job that is assigned to them. And with us, we have Donald Wilson, which is in charge of our streets, and he has done ever since we started our community walking trail to park down, lower into town. He has been the number-one person on that ever since the project started, what, 20 years ago, probably?
No, a long time.
A long time ago. So he can't retire until the whole project is complete. And what they're talking about now is doing a bike and extending a bike trail and walking trail. One day, the state's plan is to go from here all the way to Westminster, so he's going to be here for a while.
No, no. Saturday, I'll be 74 years old if I can keep going around.
And Edgar Wans here, he is in charge and responsible for things that go on at the community center. And the past year, he's been pretty active on trying to get some renovations done here that we've been trying to do for a long time. We finally got some grant money last year. Ellen, she's in charge of police, parking, and trash removal in town, which is the sanitation part of it. Laura has street lighting, and she also does, she's on the cable regulatory committee, meets with the cable people, but every other month or...
It's actually now quarterly.
Quarterly now, so. And then she also is like our liaison between the town and Elmore Elementary, and which Amy has helped with that also when she had children out there. That's a big job because it's getting all your communications in line and dealing with this teacher's schedule is kind of hard to do out there sometimes. They've done a great job at that last couple of years. And then Amy has the big job. She has everybody's problems, but the water and sewer projects, and they have water problems, sewer problems, water bills that they think that are over bigger than what they should be. So she gets all those complaints. And then she started, I think it's what, four years, this will be the fourth year for the, we started out, we called it drug awareness, and now we've changed the name so that we can get the schools involved. But that's a project that we'd like, you know, everybody, all the council and everybody in town to get, and Amy's done a good job in getting this, and this, I hope, will stay as a town project under your supervision here. So everybody has a little bit of something to do. My job is a lot of administrative stuff, like going to a lot of meetings because the town in Union Bridge doesn't have a town manager like a lot of other towns, so I have to go to the county office building. And I chose to be on some committees with the Maryland Municipal League in Annapolis. I'm on their board of directors and their executive committee, so I go to Annapolis during the legislative session when, from January through April, this past year, I was there almost every week for some kind of legislation. So that's just some of the legislative stuff I choose to do. So one day, when Chloe will be sitting up here, she'll be mayor or somebody's or town council person somewhere, gives you an idea of what you're going to have to do. And I think you'll be agreeing. And of course, this young lady sitting down here in front is Dawn Metcalf. She's our clerk treasurer, and she works in the office five days a week, and she is the lady that gets all the complaints. And she handles them pretty good.
She runs the show.
Yeah.
She runs the town.
And John McGuire is our town attorney. He gets a lot of it. In the back, we have Ken Black. It's our, back there is the stripey shirt on. He's our maintenance man here in town. He's kind of a jack-of-all-trades. We keep him very busy. He has a lot of different things that he has to do as far as checking water meters when people have problems, mowing grass, taking care of just anything in town that has to be done, putting up parking signs, street signs. We have a couple of signs now people have backed over. He painted this room for us several months ago, took everything off the walls and patched and painted.
I love doing it.
Yeah. He loved that job, so. And that is, that is about the blunt of it. It's a small town, and there's a lot of work to be done that a lot of people really don't see what happens, but it's a, it's a big challenge. We have a budget that's just around a million dollars now, which is small compared to a lot of other towns where a thousand people. When you have towns that are 5,000, 6,000 people, it's a lot busier, and they have a lot of employees. We only have one full-time employee, and we have several part-time employees that helps Ken when he needs it. So it's a good group of people to work with. I love every one of them. They're just like family up here. And when one of us have a problem, it's not just that person's problem, it's all of our problems. And I enjoy working with everybody up here, and I hope they enjoy working with me. And we try to take care of things that come in town. We not always can keep everybody happy, you know, that's government. So we do our very best, and we do get complaints, and we get some people that are upset sometimes, but we try to, try to satisfy everybody as best we can. And I have a gentleman in the back, Mr. Spriggs. If you ride down the street, he's one of our veterans that are hanging, that's hanging on one of the poles. He's done a lot of work for the town, and also his wife Barbara, she's filled in for us several years when we didn't have extra person in the office. So we just kind of like pull people from the town to come in and help us when we need to help. And thank goodness we have people like that. And we're very proud to have all of our veterans hanging on our poles in town. Right now, we have 21 veteran banners hanging. Dream Big has welcomed the Union Bridge banners. We have some of those up. We want to put more banners up. And I have some banners being, some more banners that are being made right now. So those banners will stay up until after Veterans Day, and then we'll take them down and we'll put some banners up for the winter months, and then we'll bring them back out and make sure everything's back up by Memorial Day. May, we'll bring them back out. So if anybody is a veteran or you have a veteran in your family, you want to honor them, it costs a hundred dollars to have the banner made. The town makes no money on it. And we have the business association that is kind of like helping us with that so that Dawn doesn't have extra work put on her. And it's been, it's working out very well, and I'm very proud of it to see them all over Carroll County now. And it's really, it sets out the town, shows that we give some respect for our veterans. So our next council meeting, our next work session will be August 13 at 6:30 here in the office. Our next council meeting will be August 27 at 7:00 p.m. here. Is there any further business before us this evening? Hearing none, we're in line for adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, rise.
Aye.
Motion's adjourned. Thank you very much.